Thanks, but, okay, ready to go? Good morning, everybody, and welcome to our study session for this week. We are going to first hear from Maran Murphy and Tyrell Black on the South Logan Transportation Planning Project Update. Then we're going to get a very quick ARPA update from Matt Boston and myself. And then we're going to hear from our CFO, Tony Wallace, on the 2023 budget. So, Maran and Tyrell, come on up.
All right. Good morning, council members. I'm Maran Murphy, and I'm going to share about the South Logan Transit Oriented Development Project. And I have a presentation that I'll walk through, lots of images and maps. Oh, are you doing it?
Sorry, just one second. There we go.
Should I hit slideshow?
Yep, you're good to control it from there now.
Excellent. All right, well, to first start off, I did just want to remind or share with everybody that we do have a project page, webpage, that we are keeping up to date with all of the materials and information. So that's my.speacancity.org backslash SouthLoganTOD. We also have an email address that people can connect with us. And of course, if anyone wants to chat over the phone, we have our planning services phone number, six two five sixty five hundred. So, the South Logan TOD project, I know we've talked about it a little bit. I think I haven't been here since maybe June, so I thought I'd just give another high-level overview of what it's about. So generally, we are planning for mixed-use walkable development close to transit in the South Logan area, up to about one-half mile from the new city line stations that are going through. There are three city line stations that we're looking at, two on Cincinnati and one on Mission Avenue. The focus of the project is looking at zoning and development standards to try to have more transit-supportive uses. We're also going to be studying the environmental impacts in the area through an environmental impact statement, and we've already started that process. And then the outcome is going to be a plan and policies based on community vision that will provide a framework and recommendations for this specific study area. And it will likely result in land use changes. That's sort of the focus with the sub-area plan, as well as the environmental impact statement, so we'll be bringing forward a whole package of that next year. And I did just want to quickly talk about the transit-oriented development principles, just at a high level. Overall, transit-oriented development provides a mix of supportive land uses, housing options, and destination and services linked by transit. It focuses on safety and accessibility with walking and biking improvements. And we are also focusing on housing affordability and anti-displacement strategies in this area, so that we can ensure that the benefits of transit-oriented development are shared by all people, as well as local businesses. That's kind of one of the things we've been learning about, is there's a lot of locally-owned businesses in this area, so trying to support both residents and businesses. And again, it's generally focused around a quarter-mile to half-mile around station areas, so that's kind of our study area at this time. And I did just want to show a recent planning timeline, just the idea that we have been building on a lot of work over the last decade. STA has been planning and constructing the city line for quite a while now, scheduled to open in July 2023. And within that process, they did a lot of economic impact studies, different types of studies to look at how land use could support the city line and the investment that STA has been making in that. In 2021, the city developed a transit-oriented development framework study that looked at a high level of what transit-oriented development could look like in Spokane. And from that, we're kind of narrowing down to the South Logan area to see how we can move forward with those ideas along the city line through this area. And I should also note that, within this timeframe, the Logan neighborhood also did their neighborhood plan and looked at the Hamilton corridor specifically to try to encourage more vibrant uses, more pedestrian walkability, and within that adopted a form-based code along the Hamilton corridor. So our timeline, we started earlier this summer and have been working on existing conditions, and that's what I'm going to update you all on today. We've been, we have an existing conditions report that I just put on the project website yesterday, and then we also completed a community survey. We had a planning studio in September, and then we also wrapped up our public scoping for SEPA and the environmental review as well. So, on the timeline, we are wrapping up existing conditions, and then the next step will be getting into kind of the meat of the process with looking at alternatives and doing that environmental analysis. And speaking of SEPA, wanting to share, again, just a high level of the focus that we're doing with the SEPA Planned Action. So, the Planned Action is a type of project where we study the environmental analysis early on in the process at an entire project level. And this allows us to simplify and expedite the environmental review of individual projects within the study area, once the Planned Action is adopted by council. And this really helps to create predictability within the process and within the implementation of it. It helps us carry out, be responsive to community needs, so that we are planning and then also implementing in a timely manner. And cities that have done planned actions have seen a lot of economic development being driven toward these areas. So, that's sort of the intent of the Planned Action and one of the components of this project. So, a simple graphic here, instead of doing, again, the environmental review at each individual project level, this project is going to do it at the entire study area level, and then that will allow projects that are consistent with this analysis to move forward in a more timely manner. And if there's any questions, feel free to jump in. I know you guys will, but just throwing that out there. So, I wanted to share, again, about the existing conditions, and as I mentioned, we do have a full report. We just put it on the project page yesterday. It's about eighty pages, a lot of great information. But generally, the existing conditions report helps assess existing conditions for a study area. We're looking at land use, utilities, kind of the built environment, natural environment, and it's really helping us set up the environmental review and understanding the infected environment for that environmental review. So, it's an important document that will help us build on the analysis as we go forward. And so I wanted to share some of the data from that. There's a lot more in here, but I'm just going to touch on some of the high level. So first off, I wanted to talk about resident and household characteristics. So there's just about forty-six-hundred residents in the area. The median age is quite young, at twenty-two years, namely due to Gonzaga and the students living in the area. But we also do have a considerable population of elderly residents, as well as people with disabilities, so kind of both ends of the spectrum there. There are a few senior housing apartments and facilities in the area, so that may be contributing to that, as well as older homeowners. A quarter of the residents are below, sorry, just over a quarter of the residents are below the poverty level, which could be both a long-term status, as well as kind of a temporary status. Sometimes students may have a lower income while they're in college, and so that could be contributing to that number as well. A large number of households are without a vehicle, just over twenty percent, and probably not a surprise, but almost ninety percent of the housing units in the area are rental, again, probably due to the large student population. Logan neighborhood is a fairly diverse neighborhood, and we see some of that reflected in the study area, which is a subsection of the Logan neighborhood. Kind of of note is the Latino-Hispanic population is about seven-and-a-half percent, which is higher than the city overall. We also looked at the social vulnerability index, and this is an index that the Center for Disease Control puts out every two years to look at vulnerability by census tract related to these four kind of grouped factors: socioeconomic status, household composition, disability, minority status and language, housing type and transportation. So this is data that we've just pulled from this Center for Disease Control and are just highlighting the project area within that, which is rated as moderate to high vulnerability, so not the highest vulnerability, but still moderate. And a lot of that is coming from the socioeconomic status and then the household type and transportation. Businesses and institutions in the area. This is an old historic photo from, or aerial from, I think, nineteen fifty-eight, so you can see the railroad still through there. A lot of, a lot of the area was historically manufacturing and industrial, railroad, logging. Currently, eighty percent of the employees in the study area are employed by locally-owned businesses, which I think is a really cool and important data point for this, for this study area, and something that we're talking a lot about, and how to preserve the local businesses as redevelopment may occur. And of course, Gonzaga is the dominant employer, with about forty-five percent of the total employees, but there are a number of notable employers in the area as well. This is just a map of major nodes and landmarks, and it's kind of identifying strategic spots in the study area, that's sort of the circles or nodes, and then landmarks, which are key characteristics that help make the area unique. And so we see major intersections along Hamilton and Mission. Sharp is also kind of another major area. Obviously landmarks around Gonzaga, Mission Park. I did put a star there at Jack and Dan's, could be considered a landmark. And then a lot of pathways through there, both vehicle pathways, as well as pedestrian and bicycle pathways. The area in the north is generally housing, some student housing, some retail, and then the area in the south is a lot of that manufacturing and warehouse still. We have the emergence of the Health Peninsula at the very southern point, with the new UW Medical School, Gonzaga University Health Partnership, as well as some retail along the River Rock. Just some pictures of the area, I'm sure you all are familiar with it, but ranging from Gonzaga to the Spokane River, Mission Park, student housing, single-family housing, a lot of different retail. And Sharp, just as a note, went through a redesign a couple of years ago to have bioswells and enhance connectivity across Sharp, which helps with students going to and from school. And speaking of that, this is just a map of the pedestrian and bicycle routes. It's a little bit probably hard to see here, again, this is in the full existing conditions report, but of course, we have the Centennial Trail that goes through the area, as well as the Cincinnati Greenway, that's a new north-south corridor that is focused for bicycles, and then just a lot of other pedestrian networks and existing bike networks as part of our Bicycle Master Plan. Transit service, there are a number of STA routes currently through the area, and once the city line is opened up, it really will be one of the most transit-rich areas outside of downtown, which is going to be a really exciting feature in this area. And then kind of following that, the street network is interesting, because Hamilton has a pretty high traffic load. The average annual daily traffic is over thirty thousand. As you can see, it kind of drops down a little bit once it passes Mission, and then Mission is about seventeen to nineteen thousand, but a lot of traffic coming off of the freeway there and people using it to travel through. So that's been a big discussion point that we've had a lot about. Zoning and design regulations, there's a lot on this map, and I'm not going to talk through all of it. I think the point of it is, is that there's a lot on this map. There's a lot of different zones in the area. We still have single-family and two-family zones, just, you know, within Gonzaga and north of Gonzaga, and then centers and corridors at parts along Hamilton. We have the context area, which is the form-based code, that's part of that Logan neighborhood plan. There's general commercial in the south part, that is the warehousing area, and that is a very open-ended zoning designation that allows for a lot of auto-oriented uses, which is one of the driving motivations of the Logan neighborhood plan back in 2013, was to try to promote more walkability, more pedestrian safety, more vibrancy. So, this is one of the areas that we're studying and looking at, but I just wanted to throw up the zoning map as kind of the existing condition. Current transportation projects, I'm sure you all are familiar with them, city line, obviously, the Don Cardong Bridge rebuild. The East Trent Bridge construction has been going on for a number of years with WashDOT, and hopefully that'll be wrapping up soon, but that's been a lot of construction in the area. Other developments over kind of the last couple of years, as well as recently, the Matilda Building was probably the newest private residential development along Hamilton, one floor or ground-floor retail, and then three floors of residential above that. We also had an opportunity to tour the Joya Child and Family Development Center, which is a really beautiful facility, and they, their long-term vision was focused on being in this area for thirty, forty years. So they're really excited to be close to the universities, kind of within this health, higher education focus, so that's a really great asset there. And then, of course, the new UW Medical School Gonzaga University Health Partnership, very long name, but sixty-million-dollar building investment in the area as well. A little bit about community engagement, again, we are online, that's where we're keeping a lot of our, or all of our information up to date there, the project webpage. We also launched a Story Map, which is an online platform that allows people to navigate through this information on their own time. There's videos, images, narrative, kind of a cool experience, so that's on the project webpage as well. We did just finish a community survey, so I wanted to share a little bit about that. It was open for about four months and was really an attempt to sort of get early engagement and feedback as people heard about the project. So we shared it a lot through the community update and helped us really build our stakeholder lists and interested individual list. Just a few data points from here, a lot of people visit the area for food and drink, also traveling through. We had forty-one percent of respondents live in the area, and three-quarters of the respondents either visit the area daily or a few times a week. And one of our questions we asked was about what would your ideal future look like for the South Logan area? So we see a lot of words around friendly, walkable, safe, vibrant, accessible. Those are all concepts that are part of the transit-oriented development framework, and so it's exciting to see people are thinking along those lines as well. And the full summary, there's a lot more data in here, this is also on the website, but I just wanted to kind of give a few points there. So we also did a community planning studio for three days in September at the Sears Building, which is at the southern portion of the study area. It's a really beautiful building, we're really excited to be there, and we had two community meetings, three different work groups, and it was open for three days, had some really great discussions, a lot of good input from residents and community members that stopped by. We also hosted a forum with the Gonzaga Student Body Association Senate. It was about thirty students that are from all different university levels, and we did some mapping activities and polling and discussion. We really wanted to, we've been working with Gonzaga at a high level, but we really wanted to try to get within Gonzaga and talk to the students specifically, so that was a really great opportunity. And we learned a lot from them on how they use the area, where they see issues or challenges are, and what opportunities they would like to see as they think about future students that might be in the area.
Hey, Maran.
Yeah.
Did you happen to have any conversation with kind of administration at Gonzaga around what you're doing or housing in general?
Yeah, we are. We are working at the high level. Chuck Murphy, the Chief Strategy Officer, we've been having a number of conversations with him, and he came to the community planning studio. So we are on that high level, and then this was an attempt to get more on the individual level.
No, that's great. I've been deficient in talking with them, but I went to a forum that they had last January talking about housing, and one of my hopes that they didn't really talk too much about was that they would think more about more on-campus housing options, especially to help because of the crisis that we have around the community. It wasn't something that was top of their mind at that point, but I think more conversation might, might get them to do something more.
Yeah, and they are, that was part of the conversation that we heard from them of wanting to house more of their students, and then internally, a lot of their student housing isn't equal across their experience, is what we've heard, so they are trying to update their housing, just the different ages of the dorms, and they don't have a lot of housing for upper kind of junior, senior level, and then grad students, and so they do, they have communicated that as a focus.
Great.
So, from all the conversations, this is a general kind of concept map, but there's been discussion of different sort of transformational areas, and the southern portion has been talked a lot about, that warehouse of seeing more of a transformation to mixed-use over time. So as redevelopment may occur, how could we encourage more mixed-use development, more kind of destination-oriented development? The Gonzaga students were super excited about the thought of like a mini downtown or a downtown Logan, just someplace where they can go and explore and hang out more, no lies down there, global neighborhood thrift, and trying to build off of that and see, you know, more, more retail, more mixed-use development there, and housing as well. Housing is a big focus of this, too.
Hey, Maran.
And then...
Sorry, one more on that. I think, I'm curious, and I'm trying to see the boundaries, if I can tell, but, you know, I know there are some areas in Logan where we have these just incredibly wide streets that go back, you know, a long time, and it seems like there'd be a lot of really cool opportunity to, just to do something either unique with those areas, and I'm just curious, has that been a focal point at all with the studies that you're doing?
Yes, absolutely, and that's trying to understand, yeah, exactly what we could do there. Some of the right-of-ways are quite large in this area. And then as you move north, some incremental change, but we want to see more transit-supportive uses, so how can we encourage a different mix of density up there possibly? And again, more housing that would allow people to live close to transit and have those benefits. So some emerging concepts so far, and these will kind of filter into the alternatives as we're developing them. There's been a lot of discussion, as I mentioned, along Hamilton Street specifically, whether it's driving, walking, just the overall connectivity. So, not saying one way or another, but just people have a lot of thoughts along Hamilton and that experience there. We've heard a lot about bicycle and pedestrian connections. I mentioned some of the levels of change in the residential areas. Right now, the residential areas is single-family and two-family, so could there be different types of housing as we look at different zoning categories? And then what is that range that might be considered? We've also heard about minimizing displacement of longer-term residents and local businesses, and I'll be back in December to talk more about this. Our consultant is preparing a memo about anti-displacement strategies and affordability strategies, and so we're going to dive deeper into that, but that is a concept that has come out so far. Mentioned the warehouse redevelopment, or the mixed-use redevelopment in that kind of southern warehouse area, the zoning categories. There's also been talk of side streets, so kind of getting off of Columbus or off of Hamilton. Towards the east, there's some streets, Columbus and Springfield, that might provide an opportunity to draw people off of Hamilton and maybe create more of some local destinations, kind of commercial activity there. And also just generally having the area have a neighborhood feel. It is part of Logan neighborhood, but with Hamilton coming through and the high amount of traffic and, and frankly, a large student population, wanting it to have more of a neighborhood feel, and so what can we do to help support that and enhance that feel? I will also mention, we did our public scoping, which is related to our environmental impact statement process, and that is a mandatory review period at the beginning of the process to help define the scope of the analysis. So, we began that in early September, and it was open for about six weeks. We tied it into our community planning studio with a community meeting and sent out a scoping notice, and so we received five scoping comments from wash.sta, Spokane Tribe, the Department of Ecology, and our Streets Department, so those will help inform the process in addition to all of the other input we've gotten as well. So our next steps, again, we have our project updates on the website. Our community survey is up there, the existing conditions report, the Story Map. Upcoming presentations, I'm going to be at the Logan Neighborhood Council meeting next week to share an update, and then Plan Commission as well next week, continuing the discussion around market research, and then some early discussions of the anti-displacement strategies. And then, like I said, I'll be back here in December to dive into those topics a bit more. And then, once we get that, we move into the next stage, which is our draft alternatives, and so we'll be bringing a larger package at a later date to really dig through all of that, and we'll probably have some more study sessions then, so that is all.
All right, exciting. Thanks for the presentation and all of you who've been working on that. We are, I'm just going to discuss this ARPA update, a small one. So the ARPA committee has been, we got some requests from the administration, we've asked for more information about it, and then we have several items that have just been pending that council rated pretty highly, and of course, we're kind of at the, getting close to the end of the ARPA money, and so we're waiting to get that information from the administration, and we'll come back to you. But we had one thing that we thought we could get out the door, which is the firehouse But we had one thing that we thought we could get out the door, which is the firehouse that the Fire Department has requested. And our recommendation is to give them $100,000 for the actual house and not the truck yet. We're still exploring, exploring that. And there's a long wait time on getting new trucks anyway. But anyway, so that's, so it's the, we've been calling it skinny tranche four, and there were like four other things. Now it's the skinniest of skinny. It's just the one thing. But we didn't think we should wait on that, that we should just get that out. Yep.
Do we, do we know that the hundred is enough to cover the cost of the actual house?
They haven't updated their cost since February of 21.
They told me it was 200 for the house.
No, that was with the vehicle.
That included the trailer?
Yeah.
Okay.
And everything.
We'll, we'll check back with them.
We asked them, and they said they haven't done any updates because inflation and stuff like that.
Well, fully support moving ahead, but I just want to make sure we have the right.
Okay, get the right number. All right, we'll find out.
Just a quick note, in addition to updating that number, the SBO that's in the packet, I inadvertently left some old language in there, too. So I'll update that before it's filed, too.
All right. We've got Tanya Wallace coming up. I'm sure you've been working late hours and weekends.
A few.
And your team, thanks for coming. I had one question before we started. I just, I had the media advisory from Brian Clottington that says it's a balanced budget, but I'm, that can mean different things to other people. What I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of in terms of balance is the general fund operational spending, is it match the general fund operational revenues for 2023? Or are we planning on dipping into other funds that have accumulated? That's, so to me, a balanced budget is, okay, okay, the outputs and the inputs are the, are the same. But that might not be the definition he was using. I'm just clarifying.
Balanced means resources against expenditures in most terms. But you are correct, it could also mean inflows versus outflows. It could mean both. But in terms of presenting a balanced budget, yes, we have resources to cover all of the expenses that are proposed in the budget.
How much of the resource to cover the expenses were accumulated resources as opposed to ones we think were? I know we're going to get historical high tax collections projected. I'm just wondering, how many millions are we dipping into the other accumulated funds, roughly? Or if it's already covered, then when you get to it, but?
Most of it is covered in the, in the presentation.
Okay.
So I'm going to move along. So I'm going to give you some highlights here, and I'm sure that we can have many more conversations over the next month or so as you deliberate. I'm going to cover a little bit about the citywide budget that the mayor's proposed, a little bit about the general fund, some of the budget documents and next steps. And I will cover, as you had requested, a little bit of a response on the resolution that was approved about two weeks ago. So some of the highlights, certainly the biggest highlight is investing in people. The biggest investment has been in employees. And of course, over the summer, we've had eight open labor agreements. There's still at least the guilt that is underway. So it was a very busy, compact summer between opening track and negotiating numerous labor agreements. But the biggest investment is our employees and into our neighborhoods, certainly with our public works, our capital projects, how we're investing there, as well as our most vulnerable homelessness population. The mayor has also proposed funding for homelessness. And we presented a strategy for you on the 13th of October as well. Enhance physical health and safety of the community. In the general fund, over 52% of our general fund is allocated just to public safety, just fire and police. So that doesn't include municipal court or our legal services, because that would increase that amount. But also, our fire and police are funded not just from the general fund, they're also public, from the public safety levy and the EMS levy. So many more dollars actually go towards those services than just what's in the general fund. We also unite our fire dispatch now with the regional rest of the dispatch. So that is presented and proposed in this budget as well. Plans for additional firefighters, according to that labor agreement, we will be adding about 30. We are also studying that to really make sure that 30 is the right number before we get all the way to that point. Supports staffing structure to enhance police patrol. So you did hear from Chief Mydl on his proposed restructuring to put more officers into patrol. Strategic one-time use of revenues and resources. And council member, this does get to your, your point of, yes, as we start to emerge out of the pandemic, and we have lost 37 million is our latest estimate in revenue, we are projecting and proposed to use a little more than 2.6 million of unappropriated fund balance. Now I want to remind council, too, though, in 2021, the adopted budget also proposed about a million dollars of unappropriated fund balance. And it's been used historically in the past as well. Provides funding to ensure shelter beds. That's probably one of the next largest investments that we have as well, is for our shelter providers to transition to a post-pandemic funding level. As we discussed on October 13th, this does take a little bit of time, and we do need to help educate and work with our providers to see what a post-pandemic environment looks like. And of course, the real intent is to move them into housing. And we all know that it's taking a little bit longer to build those rooftops and make them available. So citywide resources. You can see here total citywide, the budget is about 1.3 billion in total resources or, yeah, resources, we have that much available. About 300,300 million, excuse me, of that is really coming from retained earnings or fund balance. Only 2.6, again, is the general fund. But it is common practice for a lot of our enterprise funds, for example, to actually retain earnings intentionally for planned capital. And so that's what that use is, about 21% of our resources.
Could you go back, you gave us the 2.6 million from the unappropriated fund. How much for the homeless initiative one time? How many millions of dollars is that?
That would be 7 million.
And is that anticipated to also be in 2024? Or will those housing units be built that we won't have to do that?
Well, the strategy for 2024 is that that funding would be reduced down pretty substantially for 2024. Now, the strategy was saying about 3 million by 2024, and then we'd ramp down again.
Great, thanks.
When we looked at proposed expenditure of 1.2 billion, there are really a couple big pots. We have the general fund, which we all focus on. It is our most flexible fund. 68% is our restricted funds. So these are our dedicated funds, our fiduciary funds, our enterprise funds, they're restricted for specific uses. And then we have capital. Capital is about 13% of that total number. So citywide expenditure category, this kind of breaks it down by category. And you can see salary and employee benefits and then services. So these are all the contractual services that we put out, out there, capital outlay, debt service, transfers, and then budget reserves. Here's a little breakdown so that you can kind of see between the different funds. On the left, you see the fund category. You can see some of the, the biggest increase is our special revenue funds. That is still largely from federal grants that are coming in. That is also where your fire EMS fund is, where we did renew that EMS levy. So you're seeing that renewed up to the 50 cents per thousand of assessed market value. And then you see your next two larges in your enterprise funds and your internal service funds, and that is largely for capital. That's the biggest change there. But across all the funds, you are seeing increases, and that's largely in the personnel when you're looking at just the operations, again, because of the labor agreements.
So, Tanya, with this record increases, where are we allocating reserves to replace some of the funds that have been used? Are, are we there to replace, to put money back that we have been taking out of our reserves?
If I, if I understand, so there is no set aside in the general fund to help rebuild unappropriated and unassigned reserves? Typically, if you'd like to increase the contingency reserve, that would be, or establish another reserve. Otherwise, those are unassigned, unappropriated, and those could fluctuate to any level that, that, that you wish. But in the budget, there is no set aside to help rebuild those. The plan is to use some of those. When we look at staffing, you can see that the change from the adopted 22 to what's proposed is an increase of 51 FTEs. Those are largely the 30 firefighters are added in that, and then a lot in the public works funds. There was about 13 positions through public works, solid waste, development services. And then there was a little bit of a trade-off with fire dispatch going out, police dispatch coming in. And there were a few changes that were made in the interim after the 22 budget was adopted, but just a handful of those. So looking at the general fund, funding resources, 229. This is where it is balanced. It does include, you can see down there in the bottom right corner, fund balance. It's fund balance and use of that is less than 1% of the entire general fund expenditures. Even at the end of a fiscal year, between 1 and 3% margin of error is, is typical. And then general fund by division. This is where you can see the 52% for just fire and police. And just to make this most evident, fire is an allocation. We actually transfer it out into the fire EMS fund, but I wanted to break down those allocations for you here so that you're really seeing ultimately where we're spending our money. So you can see also library, that's an allocation, but 4% of our budget goes to library. We also send to parks. So parks says 7% here. Now by charter, we give them 8%, but it's 8% two years looking back. It's 8% of the actuals from two years previous. So yeah, two years with the cost increases, it does appear to be a little bit less. Here's that breakdown again, so you can see the actual numbers, where you see police at $73 million, fire at 46. But again, both these departments receive funding from other sources, the criminal justice fund, small part, but largely the public, public safety levy fund, and then the EMS fire. Just fire between general fund and the EMS, their total budgets at up to 69 million in total, there. And then you see public works, streets and utilities, and parks, courts, and you can see, I'm going to draw your attention to that bottom one that says other. That is the large grouping of really small departments that are under 3 million. So that would include city council office, certainly finance and administration, the hearing examiner, the mayor's office, clerk's office. We have several of them that are much smaller, under 3 million. Combined, they make about 13.5%. So some of the strategic proposals that are in there, and there is a detailed listing of items that have been added, is certainly the employee compensation increases for, according to all of the, the approved labor agreements. Homelessness services, again, that's 7 million from the affordable housing is the strategy, and that is what is put into the budget for your consideration. Public safety. We did present to you how we calculated overtime and made some, some different changes to address overtime differently in the budget. So those are higher budget amounts than what we have historically budgeted. We also looked at some of their pay adjustments, did some analysis there. And so those budgets are intended to be more reflective of what we think will really happen. And then several dispatch changes, many of which you have just heard about in the last couple of weeks that are going on there. Development services staffing, and then certainly utility services, support and additional staffing there, again, solid waste, sewer, and then some administration and project support as there. As the city continues to grow and we're adding more, it does take more administration. The biggest administration enhancement is adding a position for the clerk's office because of public records requests that are coming in. They are months and months behind in responding to those.
Is it, isn't development services an enterprise fund?
Yes, it is.
So is it, it's not coming from the general fund?
No.
Okay.
You're correct there. So council, we've also presented to you in, in the last several weeks, so we've presented to you on homelessness. We've tried to hit the highlights for you, homelessness, public safety, staffing, reserves, and the difference between unassigned and restricted and unrestricted, and some of that information. We would, I know that it's still a concern about capital improvement planning, and so we would like to start an education process with you to get your feedback and start a prioritization process with capital. But I do want to take a few minutes to respond to, to the resolution. So the first one does not include ARPA. We do have a very, we have a special revenue fund for ARPA. Everything is tracked in that fund. We have included in the budget the appropriation of what is still unallocated, because remember, we started this back in August, September with this budget. However, it is not in any specific program. That would wait until you have allocated to a specific program, and then we would put it into that program. So that is just intended to be a placeholder and nothing more. So contains at least a 10% reduction in general fund expenses. This budget does not include a 10% reduction in general fund expenses. The use of fund balance represents less than 1% of the entire general fund that is proposed in this budget. Our proposal is to work with you over the next several months through 2023 to really get back to basics, get back to our core services, and then make sure that we're doing them as efficiently and effectively as possible. And really target that we're within, like I said, a, a margin of error in projections is between 1 and 3%. We're there now with this budget, but I understand your concerns and with growing, growing costs. We need to stay confined to that. And, and we do need to bring service level options to you. But we also need to take the time to build those up and have those discussions and bring them forward.
Tanya, if you were, or if we were putting together a biennial budget or longer, like a four-year, like the legislature has to do now, without any sort of reductions, would it balance?
No, sir.
So how, I mean, I guess is your thought in terms of the, the structural gaps, then to identify reductions or what, how, what's exactly the goal of, of that process?
The ultimate goal is to identify solutions. I don't want to say reductions, because in some cases, we aren't charging fees where we maybe should be charging fees. So maybe instead of a service reduction, we're going to charge for a service at a more acceptable fee level. So it's a combination of looking at all of that. In some cases, it will be a service reduction. We may find that we're providing services that aren't core to a city, and we should discuss that. And that is a policy discussion that, that we need to have. So the intent is really like, let's just, let's, in the next, over the next three years, what is it going to take to get that gap closed? And what solutions can we bring to you? What options can we bring to you? And like I said, some cases, it's not going to be a service reduction, it's going to be a service fee change.
And then one, one more question. Sorry, I don't want to take you off track of this, but in terms of the, the projected revenue, did I, I want to make sure I heard correctly. Did, somebody said that we are projected to have record-breaking revenues next year? Is that, did I hear that correctly? Or did I miss here?
I said that.
Oh, you said that.
That's my understanding, is it?
Is that, is that accurate? Are we projected to have record-breaking revenues next year?
Those are, those are not my words.
No, I, I'm just asking. I mean, are we projected to have significant?
But historically, as far as the amount of property tax and sales tax combined, will that be the most? that be the most property and sales tax that we've ever collected?
Yes, and that's been the case, though, every year except for 2020, when we dropped 3.5% in revenue. Otherwise, yeah, revenue keeps climbing. So yeah, 2023 revenue is going to be more than 2022.
So let me ask it a different way. I guess, how are we, how are we projecting what the revenue will be next year? Because there are a lot of unknowns. And so I'm just, I'm just curious how we're projecting out the anticipated amount of revenue for next year, particularly sales tax.
Particularly sales tax. So Jake Miller did give a presentation on revenue. But sales tax, although it seems like it is high, it is really not. We have over 8% inflation, and we've seen significant increases in just that, and folks are still spending their money. So we're projecting actually a retraction if you just assumed every, just because of inflation. We have had record attendance at events this summer. So we're just taking all of that into account and still being conservative, but higher prices are bringing in more revenue.
Sure.
We would, we're definitely going to be watching that. One of the, one of the bigger changes that has happened too in the revenue is on interest. Our LGIP rate is going up, and the last couple, just last two months in interest income, we've seen a significant jump there. But we are watching it very carefully, and we will bring to you quarterly adjustments if that is, if that is what we see.
And then, sorry, just one last. You know, one of the things that we put in the letter was the idea of, you know, coming back mid-year and making adjustments next year. Is that something that the administration's open to doing?
Yes, yes. That is on our next slide.
Oh, all right.
Before you leave the slide, I just, one quick question on the ARPA. I appreciated that you're, you've got the money in the balance sheet, but it's not allocated to programs. The one issue that I keep hearing differing views, council set aside 3 million or 3.5 million of ARPA for homelessness, but we haven't done the RFP yet for that, and we've been waiting to negotiate with CHHS on that. Is any money from that bucket allocated to programs in this budget?
The 3.5 million is allocated for homelessness, and we should probably have a discussion on that really, really soon.
But is it allocated to a specific homeless program? I know the topic, we agreed, but we haven't agreed on specifically how to allocate it. And so I'm wondering, in this budget, is it allocated to a contract or a prevent?
Not in 2023, because if it's been allocated already, and it's in 2022, whatever is left unspent but committed, it will roll over into 2023 through the year-end process, the encumbrance process.
But we haven't allocated it even for 2022 in terms of what specifically it goes to as a council.
Not specifically.
So we've been?
But council president, we will have to have probably a conversation offline about that.
Okay. So it sounds like it has been being spent, but even though we were not going to get anything else.
Right. None, none that you have allocated right now. This is only, I believe it's like 11 million or 13 million is all that's in 23 that is unallocated, that you haven't done an SPO for. So number three?
Yes. I just have to ask on the administration proposal, the service program review. That sounds good, but what kind of structure? I mean, you just can't put that in there and ask us to bite off on it if there isn't some type of loose plan that you could present to council of what that would look like going forward, since it hasn't happened. I'm just trying, what would be different in a few months than what's going on right now? Because that's what we've been asking for kind of all year long, is that review, and that wasn't available to us.
Council member Wilkerson, I have asked Hannah Lee and council president for some time for study session, and that is the very specific topic of the December, of a December study session.
Okay.
So that we can get your feedback and provide kind of a structure, a plan, and you can understand what is coming and give us feedback to say, is that going to hit the mark or not?
Thank you.
Tanya, real quick, quick question is, so back to the sales tax revenue question for next year. What is the sales tax percentage increase that you're projecting?
Off the top of my head?
Or somewhere?
Off the top of my head, I would have to say maybe 5.6, but that is a rough estimate. I don't recall the exact number after looking at very many, a lot of numbers.
You'll get back to us on that, please.
Yeah, I think, I believe it's in Jake's presentation that he gave just a week ago.
And then overall, I'm just a little confused still. So we are expecting revenue to be kind of slight increase, I guess, but expenses are going up. And we're talking about long-term, over three years, cutting back to core services, but we're increasing right now the amount that we're going to withdraw from the unallocated reserves, more than previously. It was a million previously, now it's 2.6 million. So why aren't we cutting back to core services right now? If we know that's the issue right now, why is this budget not cutting back to core services now?
The only answer that I would have is that the demand for service is there now. In fact, we're being very challenged in meeting the demand for service. We, if you look at our out-of-grade pay, which we're still reviewing, out-of-grade pay, you look at overtime, it's a very clear indicator that service demand is tremendously high. And that takes more of a public discussion of which services do we cut back, and then how is it going to be impacted to the citizens?
Shouldn't we have been doing that for like the last six months as we prepare for the budget?
Again, it was a very busy summer. I don't have all the answers to that. We were negotiating eight labor agreements. Some of this is the result of those labor agreements, that the outcome just happened within the last three months. And so that was unknown, what that was going to come out to be. In addition, we were really trying to open track. So it's all resources are focused on the current latest burning fires at the time.
I would just add, I've also heard that there are certain departments that have had to hire employees and pay them out of grade or add to pay just because the workloads are so high. So I mean, I don't know how much money that amounts to, but I know that that's been a big deal with some departments. And HR and civil service kind of lagging behind and trying to get caught up too.
And I just want to note, I just want to acknowledge, you are the messenger. You're not the one that makes that. I just want to be clear. We appreciate your coming in. Those are, you know, mayoral decisions, not CFO decisions. You just have to translate those decisions to us.
Thank you.
So I just want to acknowledge that and appreciate your presentation.
On number three, public safety, capital, the resolution did say include any requested. Truth is, is we have never been, had the ability to fund any capital request. The city has been very smart about what it does fund, and this is a priority-based budget that says we fund the highest priorities, we don't fund all of them, and they're not all priorities. So the 2023 capital budget, which is only the first year of that plan, which is in the budget, it includes everything that is funded. And that is where we have identified the funding. We have a reasonable assurance that it's there for 23, which starts in two months, to start ordering equipment. Unfunded projects do require financial strategy. So they're not part of 2023 budget. But again, we've requested time to start that process with you, and I think that process really needs to start, just again, just my opinion. The process really needs to start with getting you really familiar with the requests that are in there, and giving you ample time to ask questions about the projects, and then in a collaboration of what are those project priorities. If we understand the priorities, we can then bring forward better funding strategies for the priorities.
But amongst the projects that are unfunded, are there any that we expect that we will have to fund in 23?
We may have to have a funding strategy established in 23 to hit the mark.
Because I just want to make sure it's, you know, we're not going to be surprised come June, and suddenly it's like, oh, we've got to buy these, you know, whatever it is, we've got to invest in this, and, oh, we've known all along, but we just didn't have a funding source, we didn't put it in the budget. And so I just want to make sure we avoid any surprises like that.
And I think we all went to avoid surprises like that, which is next Thursday, if we do have time, was just the intent of, here are those projects, not looking at 23, but here are the ones that were deferred or unfunded, because we don't want you to be surprised. It does take time to, it does take time to build these financial strategies. Sometimes it will take months. Even a simple SIP loan takes three months on average to get it done from start to finish.
The challenge, the challenge, though, is what's happened in the last year is we get presented with an emergency. Like, if you don't do this, what we're saying, if there's emergencies that we know are coming up, we would like them now so that we can make other cuts now before we've committed and told people, yes, you have a position or not, you know. This is our time where we could make adjustments over a year's worth of spending to pay for an emergency if we know. That's, I think, and there are some emergencies that you can anticipate, so we understand that. But, but what we're looking for over the next few weeks, and we can cover it in another session, is what, what are we going to hear from fire and police essentially that says, this will be an emergency if you don't fund it in 2023? So we know that, and we can make other adjustments, as opposed to go, oh, well, we've got enough. We can do something. We don't absolutely have to, but we will. It's a good idea. The public wants it. And then we're in a jam. So that's what we're trying to avoid.
Yes. Yeah, I completely understand, council president.
And I just want to, if I remember correctly, haven't we heard you say that fire is expecting $5 million in equipment that they're going to be needing as high demand in the next year? Don't think that's in the 23 budget.
And I don't think I said that.
And police vehicles, I want to get back to police vehicles, our favorite topic. That is not included in the budget, so that's not going to be a high-demand issue next year.
I can't say that it's not going to be an issue next year.
But we did allocate a lot of money already.
Ready, right. But for a future-
And they're just going to come in.
I was like, I know, the police keep saying we need to purchase in advance. So that next year, we need to purchase next year for two years.
I do know that we are expecting to get quite a few of the police vehicles delivered in January, which is a little bit ahead of schedule. So we are planning for, we're ramping up right now of a commissioning strategy.
But the mayor's proposal does not plan on asking for a new purchase of police vehicles next year.
It's not in her proposed budget.
All right, so not a top priority.
Number four provides a longer-term public safety capital facility plan. We, again, propose that we not just look at public safety, but we have a lot of facility needs as well that don't, don't get a good look, and also have a lot of needs. For example, the city hall roof is a $1.3 million project. We know MLK Center has some needs. We need to look at our facilities as well. And every new facility, every facility we take on brings on preventative maintenance, brings on a set of capital items as well. So we do want to get in front of you, and like I said, I would like to start as soon as next Thursday, just to say, here are the projects. Give you some soak time, get familiar with the projects, and then work with you on what are the priorities for you, because then we can bring you a good financial strategy around those priorities. There are different strategies depending on what the capital item is. Ties additional ARPA revenue replacement allocations to permanent cuts in positions for 2023. I think we'd like to work with you for clarification, because this, this didn't, this was confusing. This didn't make sense. And I would say, for example, where the mayor has proposed funding for fire and police overtime, our interpretation would mean that you're looking for cuts in fire and police that are permanent.
Not necessarily fire and police, but we're looking, in order to make sure that that's a one-time piece, we need to create going forward what the revenue stream is to continue to fund fire and police overtime. And so if it's tied to permanent elimination of positions, then we'll know, okay, well, out of cover. Doesn't have to, we didn't, we weren't saying it had to be in fire and police.
So maybe a rephrasing is, is, if I can, council president, is if ARPA funding is being used for operations, base operations, you'd be looking for that replacement. But if it is one-time, is there still a cut?
No, what it is, is we're saying, we're doing a one, we're trying to make sure that the ARPA-
Is used for one-time.
That we're spending is one-time. And the only way we can think to do that based on now two years in a row of fire overtime, is that we say, okay, we will show you for this $100,000. There's $100,000 in positions that have been eliminated, so we'll be able to accumulate that $100,000 over the next year for when we have to pay overtime again.
Okay. That, that makes more sense.
But not by department. It could be across the enterprise.
Establish a contra-account hiring-free status for 2023 for positions. The 2023 budget proposed by the mayor does include contra-accounts. In the general fund, it amounts to nearly $4 million, and that equates to essentially freezing a little more than 28 positions.
How many of those are the firefighters that you weren't going to add till July? Or is that most of it?
The firefighters in a different fund, so it doesn't include any of them. Number seven, reestablish a health, I think healthy, I'm sorry, got a typo there, healthy unassigned reserve balance of 10 to 15%. Unrestricted, as we've presented to you, reserves already exceed more than 10% now, and that is not even including the unappropriated unassigned fund balance. Now, I have asked for a completely third-party opinion of would us using our unappropriated fund balance hurt our bond rating. I don't have that opinion yet, but I will certainly provide it to you when I get that.
I'm, I'm not, so when I'm looking, when we're saying unassigned reserves, 10 to 15%, what's the difference between our phrase of unassigned reserves and unrestricted reserves? Because I thought we were going to be down to like 2 or 3 million by the end of this calendar year in unassigned reserves.
Under, under GASB and GFOA recommendations, they look at unrestricted. So unrestricted includes your committed, your assigned, and your unassigned.
So the contingency reserve and the revenue, you're including that as the unrestricted?
Yes, because that's what GASB and GFOA look at. That is also what the rating agencies look at, is restricted versus unrestricted. Unassigned is a component of unrestricted.
All right. Well, I understand your language. Our request was for the unassigned to get back up to the 10 to 15%, but, so you're not, you're not saying that we're at 10% for unassigned. It's just if you count those other reserve funds in it.
Right. Right.
Tanya, real quick, on the third-party opinion about bond rating, have you, is that also going to include Moody's or S&amp;P as they do the bond ratings? Are we getting their opinion?
No, I'm not getting their opinion. We would most likely have to pay for that opinion. Number eight, commits to not bringing forward special revenue ordinances before Q3. So administration proposes certainly bringing forward anything that is revenue neutral. So if we identify a new revenue source, and we'd bring that forward. Those are largely going to be our grants. So we do want to bring those forward. And then, of course, we will robustly review so that you can have confidence that a due diligence has been completed on that. Because we also want to make sure with grant funding that when a grant ends, we don't have any further commitment beyond that. And then we also propose, and I think Cathcart, this goes to your suggestion, of a mid-year general fund financial review. And then if there are budgetary reallocations, that we can present those to you at that time as well. I think that that would kind of address your concern there. And part of that mid-year review also includes updated projections and includes a pre-audit, unaudited closeout of 2022, so that we know how we actually ended 22 compared to the budget plan.
So, and that's, that's great. I really want to have that mid-year option. option, but what's going to happen, I guess, you know, between January and that mid-year to identify potential changes? I mean, is there going to be a study, an analysis of things we can contract out, cuts we can make, new revenue sources that we should be, you know, putting on the ballot or passing council-matically? I mean, what, what will happen in those six months or, or so?
Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart. I think that is part of that December discussion when we bring to you a plan of services that, that will be under review and what that structure kind of looks like so that you can anticipate what to expect in that mid-year review. Because you would be part of that process, so it should not be a surprise of what you might see. But what it looks like right now, I, I, I don't know at this point in time.
But it wouldn't just be a mid-year review? I mean, there would be work being done actively?
Yes, oh, yes, yes. Yes, and there may be recommendations for some adjustments.
So I certainly understand the grants as they come through as SBOs. What I was trying to get at earlier was the unassigned reserve balance. Was there any resources that was going to be able to be put into that account for that unassigned reserve, which was over 20 million? And now we're down to the bottom. So with record or increase in revenue that we have not, are not looking at putting anything back into that account and looking at cutting somewhere else or, or not funding? Just as a person around the kitchen table, times are tough and we're not putting away anything coming up in 2023 in preparation for inflation or unexpected anything? I'm just so uncomfortable that we went through so much of our unassigned balance last year with all the additional monies that came in through COVID and ARPA and other resources that there is just, we still just spent and there's nothing left over that we can't even save $500,000. That's just crazy-making to me, so. I just want to throw that out there, that's just my position.
Councilmember Wilkerson, I can share with you, in, in my past life, we would, we would bring to council at the closeout of a fiscal year because that's what determines what your final ending balance really is. It's prior year actual accumulation of unspent dollars. So budgetarily, you can put something in the budget to have something set aside. It just means you're not going to spend. It doesn't guarantee, though, that you're going to put something into that kitty, so to speak. But in that mid-year review, we can bring to you what those balances are. And again, if you'd like to establish a different reserve and hold some aside, if you, if you like a strategic reserve, which you have established, if you'd like to increase the contingency reserve or increase the revenue replacement reserve, that is a great time to say, yes, take some of this unassigned, unappropriated fund balance that's not, that you know what the balance is and make this one bigger or set this aside here, so.
Thank you, Tanya. Please just don't bring an SBO for the roof of the city hall since we've already talked about it, so.
It took a few years of saving to get that one done. Yeah. So you might notice a few different changes. I'm going to move on to the mayor's proposed budget. We use new software, this was new Questa Cut, new casewear that actually created the book. It still includes a lot of the basics, the mayor's budget message, budget summary, operational strategic proposals. We did include for you the other proposals that the divisions had that for various reasons are not included at this time, but we wanted to be transparent with you on those. And then financial reports and then division budget book reports are all included in there. Next steps. In fact, later today will be our first meeting with the Budget Committee, so that takes place today. The first reading of the property tax ordinance is next Monday, we have to certify by the 30th. Also, the opening of the budget hearing starts Monday for you. You'll go through several weeks of, of that and give the public opportunity to respond as well. On the 14th, you will have the first reading of the Capital Improvement Program ordinance. And then 12:05, closing of the budget hearing. And on 12:12, we hope to pass an ordinance and adopt the budget. And then, of course, administration step after that is we will run into the system and then rebalance everything so that January 1, we have a live budget system.
Another one, yeah. To go to the property tax ordinance, what's the rationale for not supporting a 1% increase? And instead, I guess, going to unallocated reserves for $450,000?
My understanding is the mayor's proposed to not accept the 1% to really, in gesture, give back to the public.
But instead take from the unallocated reserves? Essentially. Second question is, I heard the mayor this week talking about her support for increased police officers and the need for more police officers. I didn't hear that anywhere in the budget, that there's a call or a priority for more police officers. So I want to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly.
Yes, she does support adding police officers. We have to identify funding first before we can add more police officers. But she definitely supports and part of that first step is my understanding that her priority is definitely on patrol for public safety, which is why right now she is very supportive of Chief Midell's change to increase patrol levels.
So no proposal for additional revenue, additional police officers, there's no proposal for that?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to know if it's going to be at any time in 2023 because I wouldn't want that surprise because we already have budgeted for the open positions now, which I think are about 20, 30 in the police department. And that's a, a great goal that we would all like to see. But if there is no additional revenues to come in, I don't even want to be putting that out there in the community that we may be hiring more additional police officers when we know we cannot afford them or the equipment that goes with them. So to me, that's a false narrative to our community to start setting that expectation that we, as a city, cannot deliver on. So that's just my position on that.
Well, I just, we, we desperately need the more police officers, but yeah, we can't afford it today. So, but we're going to come back in six months, right? That's the goal and look at the budget again. And at that point in time, there could be a difference in the economy, there could be changes in our revenue, there could be a whole lot of things that occur and we can always consider it then. But yeah, today, we don't have the revenue just sitting around to, to hire them. So I would certainly agree with that. And as far as the property tax goes, people can't afford it. I mean, we are taxing them out of their homes, literally. They cannot afford it, done.
I'm sure we'll have more talk about property taxes later, but I just want to point out the median house is an $8 increase over the course of the year. It's $8.
That's ours, add up all the others, just keep adding, just keep adding.
But we're only impacting ours. It's $8 for us, less than a dollar a month.
All right, preview, future discussions. Tanya, thanks again so much for bringing this to us and we'll look forward to more meetings and.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Thank you, thank you, Tanya.
All right, I think that brings us to the end of today's meeting. We do have, on Monday, double briefing session and plenty of spicy things on the agenda. So plan for a long Monday, that is your punishment for having an easy Monday this last week. But with that, take care of yourself, if you can, take someone else, take care of someone else, and we are adjourned.
Yeah, that was the trick.
That's the trick.